It is good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM now on November 20th. And I'd like to call this regular monthly board meeting to order. I want to thank everybody for this good crowd we got here tonight. And you know, going into the season, it's time to be thankful. Last night, for some reason, I was laying in bed awake and Hallmark was on. And one of the mayors, he went back to his school where he grew up in. And he was being interviewed by a fifth grader. And they asked him, "Why do you come back here? And why do you serve?" And I started thinking about this community, about this school, all the people here. And I know we don't say it many times as board members up here, but we would like to thank everybody that's involved in this district. Thank you for this community. And thank all these board members that here serving. Because I know when they got out of school, they didn't think they'd be a board member. They didn't think they'd be up here serving like this. Because one unique thing is all seven of us are Lexington two graduates, which is kind of uncommon. But we all came back to where we grew up. And so on behalf of the board, I would like to thank all of our people. Starting with Dr. Hafner, of all the things she does. I know it's an unthankful job of serving over 1,250 people, 10,000 students. I want to thank the board, all they do. And our cabinet members. Because cabinet members, I mean, they catch heat all the time from one of us sevens, always calling about something. So we thank y'all. And I know we never really sit down and say, "Thank you." But we are thankful for each and every one of y'all. And then to the principals that sit out here, they come every month and listen to us up here and ramble around. And so thank the principals, all administrators that come, all the students. And I think, I want to thank our transportation too, because you know, we don't usually thank them, but they're up at three and four o'clock in the morning going to get these buses to get our kids to school. So we thank them. And then to our teachers. We thank y'all for what y'all do, our front row out there teaching our kids. And to the students. We thank y'all for coming here to Lexington two, for having the trust in us and belief in us that we will get you where you need to be. So thank everyone. And so on this Thanksgiving season, I know all y'all are out next week. Y'all ready to be off all week, and y'all excited about that. And so we don't really meet again until January. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all y'all for what y'all do. Hope y'all have a happy Thanksgiving and a merry Christmas, because we'll see y'all again in 2026 now. Did you ever think we'd be at 2026? So thank everybody, but I'm going to quit rambling now, so we're going to move on. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wooton. She's got two students out here to bring up to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we're delighted to have two students from Brooklyn Casey High School. We have Brad Lynn Sterkey, who will be leading us in the invocation. And we have Grace Sur, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Brad Lynn is a senior at Brooklyn Casey High School. She serves as the senior class president. Other roles include National Honor Society, Bearcat Buddy Secretary, and Fellowship of Christian Athletes Leader. Brad Lynn has been on the varsity softball team since her freshman year and the varsity tennis team since her sophomore year. Brad Lynn also played on the varsity golf team this past season. She is an honor student and currently has a weighted GPA of 5.2. After high school, Brad Lynn hopes to attend Clemson University, where she will major in architecture or construction management. Grace is a senior at Brooklyn Casey High School. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Bearcat Buddies, and FCA. Grace serves as the student body secretary. Grace holds a 4.7 weighted GPA. She is also a member of the B.C. High School varsity tennis and soccer teams. After Grace graduates, she plans to attend USC, major in nursing, and then further her education to hopefully become a certified registered nurse anethicist. Okay, ladies, if y'all will just step to the podium.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings you give us. I ask that you are with all the board members here tonight, as well as all the faculty, staff, and teachers in the Lexington two district. I ask that you please help us keep an open mind and open hearts tonight as we make decisions. And I ask that you protect us all over Thanksgiving break and the weeks to follow. Please help us be a light of this world in all that we say and do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Heart with no objections, the consent agenda stands approved as presented. And now I'd like to turn over, our next item on the agenda is the election of officers. And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hafner to handle this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I will accept nominations for board chair, Mr. All.
Yes, I nominate, we keep our momentum going, and we keep Mr. Key. Kevin Key is our board chair, Linda Wooton is vice chair, and Christina Rucker as secretary.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Show by hand, raise up hand. Very good.
All right. Well, thank y'all and congratulations to the officers and board.
Thank y'all.
We are going to move on into accomplishments, honors and accomplishments. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Hafner.
There we go. Thank you, sir. First up tonight, I'm excited to invite up our latest champions, the coaches and players and interim principal, Mrs. Linda Bundrick Brown, from Pine Ridge Middle School's volleyball team, which recently won the Lower Midlands Atlantic Conference Championships. Come on up.
I'm so excited, y'all, to be able to bring these girls to you. I've waited three months patiently, sometimes, and not so patiently other times, to bring some group from Pine Ridge so that we could be appreciated and the girls recognized. I've asked Coach Kylie Williams and the girls to come up and tell, give you their naming grade. And Coach will tell you a little bit about our season.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Azori Faust, and I'm in an eighth grade.
Hello, my name is Leak Taylor, and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hello, my name is Parrish Wright, and I'm an eighth grade student at Pine Ridge Middle School.
My name is Janita Hoop, and I'm an eighth grade student at Pine Ridge Middle.
Hi, my name is Leila Martin, and I am an eighth grader at Pine Ridge Middle School.
Hello, my name is Andrea, and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Julian Chapman, and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Summer Stone, I'm in the eighth grade.
And I'm Coach Kylie Williams. I teach eighth grade science at Pine Ridge Middle School. This is my third year teaching there, my second year coaching them. Last year, we went two and 10. This year, we went 10 and 2. Definitely much better. These girls worked incredibly hard. They worked incredibly hard. I still don't know some of the signs the refs are doing, but they know what they're doing, and they have been phenomenal. We went on to sweep in the conference championship and went in and won two out of three sets. So these girls are amazing. Round of applause.
Congratulations.
Sounds like you're going to have to do some recruiting next year. That's all eighth graders, isn't it?
I had two seventh graders.
Okay.
I noticed that as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Busby Academy for the Arts interim principal, Alicia Dickerson, to the podium to introduce us to an academy arts teacher who is having one of her lesson plans published through Arts and Basic Curriculum in conjunction with the South Carolina Department of Education's Instruction Hub. Mrs. Dickerson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hafner, good evening. It is my honor to recognize Ms. Carol Cuthu, our art teacher at Busby Creative Arts Academy. Her lesson plan, Mythical Creature Creation, has been selected by the Arts and Basic Curriculum Team as an exemplar for arts and arts-integrated education. Because of its outstanding quality, her lesson will be published through the ABC in partnership with the South Carolina Department of Education Instruction Hub. And it will also be featured in the ABC Arts Integration Toolkits. As part of this recognition, Ms. Cuthu will receive a stipend from the ABC, participate in a virtual review process, and collaborate with a small cohort of fellow art educators. We are incredibly proud of Ms. Cuthu and grateful for the impact she has continued at BCAA. At this time, I'm going to have Ms. Cuthu share a brief overview of her publication.
Good evening, I'm Carol Cuthu. This is my third year at Busby. Almost 15 years teaching middle school art. But this lesson that we came up with, or that I came up with, started out with a simple sketchbook assignment with my students, an honors class that I teach that's a year long. And after that, we just had a good time. And I said, "Hey, you know, what happens if we build this?" And so we ended up making it a three-dimensional project. And I submitted that for my submission for ABC, and they accepted it, so.
Congratulations. The next two items on the agenda for honors and accomplishments will be introduced by Director of Bilingual Services Denise Quickle, who will be talking with us about some ML student testing, as well as students in our interpreters program.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hafner. I always love to come and share celebrations of the district. If you will allow me, I'd like to kind of reverse the two items I'm going to be talking about today, because the second group is actually going to assist us with the first group, okay? If you are one of our ML ambassadors that are present for the evening, can you come join me? Okay? This is a group of students. We have briefly recognized some of them at our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. Two of them are not with us tonight, but we are very blessed to have been able to begin an ML ambassador group this past year, where we have trained a team of our students to be student interpreters. And we brought in an outside consultant. And our team was trained in not only the art of translation and interpretation, what that looks like. They were trained in confidentiality, in how to protect those conversations as the profession requires of them. And moving forward, there will be additional training. But one of the benefits, before I introduce them, is that this is a pathway. First of all, these students have multiple pathways to get to college and career readiness. So you will see great things from them. But it is a pathway that we are beginning to explore as a pathway for work-based learning credit. They have already invested, gosh, I can't even tell you the number of hours that they have committed and are requested from our schools regularly. So with that being said, I'm going to introduce the three of them, and also one of our district interpreters, who serves as the facilitator for this group. And I'm actually going to let Ms. Paula Adams introduce them. And then we're going to move into another celebration. And I think Briseida is going to help me with that, to make sure our families are fully able to participate with us tonight. So going to turn it over to Ms. Paula Adams, and then we'll move forward with our celebrations.
Thank you for having us today. I'm super proud of this group of ambassadors. They have really shown up and helped our families. I couldn't be more proud. I feel like a mom to them, interpreter mom. So I'm just super proud of them, and I know that they are going to go far. And this is just the first of many to come. Les queremos presentar a los estudiantes que nos están ayudando a ser interpretes en este momento. Ellos también van a ayudar con la celebración de los otros estudiantes. Entonces primero que todo los queremos presentar. Tenemos a Briseida Moscoso from the B.C. Airport. Sorry. Frida Barrientos from B.C. And Mario Mar from Airport. Entonces tenemos a Briseida, Frida, y a Mario. Las dos de B.C. y Mario de Airport. Oh, yes. And our two that unfortunately were not able to make it are two from Airport High School, Brianna and Jonathan.
Thank you for that. It is a great group. This summer, we plan to expand, as I said, our program. This group, obviously, are Spanish speakers, but that is not representative of all the students in our district. So this summer, we will be focusing on training students that are speakers of other languages than English or Spanish. That looks a little bit different. So the next group I will be introducing you to will be Dari speakers. Maybe they're Farsi speakers. We have Karen, we have Gujarati. So we are really going to be targeting students that can continue to help us support our families moving forward. So the next part of our celebration, are you going to help me? Okay, wonderful. If I may just move on in, we are here to celebrate tonight a group of students who had great success on the access test. So I'm excited to share this group of students with you this evening, because they have demonstrated excellence with their English proficiency. These students had to achieve a score of 4.4 or higher in order to exit multilingual services in our district. So the access test is given every spring, and the students have to master in four areas: reading, speaking, writing, and listening. So please join me, I'm going to call their names. We have a lot, that's a great thing, as we celebrate their success.
Buenas tardes, me complace presentarles esta noche a un grupo de estudiantes que han demostrado excelencia en su dominio de inglés. Estos estudiantes tuvieron que alcanzar una puntuación de 4.4 o más para salir de los servicios de aprendices multilingües. El examen access se administra cada primavera, y los estudiantes deben demostrar dominio en cuatro áreas: lectura, expresión oral, escritura, y comprensión auditiva. Por favor acompáñenme en celebrar su éxito.
Okay, so when I call your name, if you will, come join us, stand up, whatever is easiest. You want to join me, okay? And I have a list by school, so I'm just going to start with our elementary students. The first student, goodness, I typed this, and I did not account for my own ability to need my readers, so. Okay, so the first student we have is Genesis Aramillo Leyva. And if they are not here, we're just going to keep going. So if you hear your name, please stand up.
There she comes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, Maria Arias Vázquez. These are all students from Riverbank. We have Franklin Menendez Romero, Henry Baptista Chávez, Jessly Martinez González, Nelly Argueta Murillo, Jasli García Mendez, Angeli Aguirre Gómez, Alex Martínez Serrano, Isabela Artiaga Gaspar, Casey Hernández Velasco, Bianca Riviero Costa, Wendy Roblero Puac, Darwin Aguilar Mejía, Angeli Duarte Martínez, Francis Vázquez Pérez, Antonio García González, Jival Yoshji, Emmanuel Ramírez Pineda, Bella Espinoza Reyes, Keisha Pérez Martínez. We're just going to keep going. We have Christopher Bautista Archila from Springdale, Dulce Oporto from Wood Elementary, Ariani Castro, Guifero from Wood, Emerson Sanchez Gómez, Aileen Oriana Álvarez, Edward Contreras Silva, Nathan Gonzalez, Jesús Morales López, Mariana Sanchez Medina, Kobe Vázquez, Genesis Contreras Rojas, Miguel Reyes Cruz, Amelia Sierra, Carla Vicente Castro from Wood. Okay, let's keep going. KC Elementary, Edwin Castañón Mejía, Liam Castillo Torres, Alicia Castro González, Uriel, okay? Uriel Mendoza Pérez, Justin Flores Roblero. And Justin is at Suleta River. Ashley Juárez Pérez, Keiva Patel, Bianca Riviero Costa, Zuri Vázquez León, Alexandra González de la Luz, Christian So, Wilson Trueblood. We also have from Congaree Elementary, Carlos del Valle Orta, Christopher Pina Martínez, Liam Collin Fajardo, Isleen Baptista Gajindo, Jahaly Fajardo Okindo, Wallace Carréyes. Mitzi Flores Hernández, Zuri Vázquez León. And our last elementary student to have exited is Susana Rubio Morales. Okay, our middle school students. From, give them a chance to sit down. From Busby, we have America Hernandez Pérez and Allison Giron Menendez. From Northside, we have Brian Aguilar Castañón, Julisa Aguilar Mejía, Jester Castaneda Rosario, Betsy Castañón Torres, Jorge García Corrado, Jamie Garcías Joaquín, Carlos Gutierrez Ávila, Jenny Hernández Martínez, Brian López López, Alan Molina Diaz, Ally Núñez, Jade Ramírez Pérez, Viviana Rodríguez. From Pine Ridge, we have Crystal Asoy Mendez, Dana Morales Maldonado, Alexander Vieda Estrada, and Diego Vázquez. And then from Fulmer, we have Romeo Jacobo García, Annalicia Hernández, Amber Santana, Angie Murillo Flores, David González Ávila, Nazar Zalinski, Brian Dominguez Mindiola, and our last middle school student is Angelí Morales Benítez. Congratulations to all of those students. Last but not least, we have a group of, oh, there you go. Congratulations, I did not mean to leave you. Congratulations. Okay, from Airport High School, we have exiting services this year. Eric Angel Onate, Jade Ramos, Martin Cervantes Gallardo, Johnny Guzmán Tevelán, Jimmy Ricardo Merlo, Jesús Gallardo, Carlos Martínez Martínez, Anushka Roldán García. I wish Anushka was here. I had her in Fulmer Middle, and I saw her last week. So got some other exciting news about a group of airport students in January. After Anushka, we have Samantha Alfonso Duarte. And then we have Natalie Ortiz Valverde from Airport. Last but not least is our students from B.C. High School. Vanjel, uh, Vanjel, Vanjelcine Aguilar García. I got to say that correctly. Vanhelsing is his first name, Aguilar García. Claudia Aguilar Mejía, Leslie Ariola Salazar, Jennifer Bamaca de León, Ariani Barragan González, Axel Barrientos Guerrero. Okay, can we keep going? Angel Camino González, Januel Castañón Cinto, Anderson Cinto Joc, Isdery Clavel Serrano, Yahir Corcuera Noyola, Lisander Corcuera Noyola, Amarani Del Valle Herrera, Zaire Delgado, or Andy Delgado, Christopher Duarte Martínez, Jamelit Flores Roblero, Carlos Flores Roblero, Gerardo García Quinones, Allison Giron Mendez, Alexander González, Amy Guerrero Lucero, Nayeli Jimenez. Come on, yeah. Come on, yeah. Nayeli Jiménez González, Esther Lahn, Alexander Mederos Roman, Kylie Mederos Roman, Yas Nayak, Edis Núñez Mantoya, Abigail Núñez, Jana Patel, Isabela Paul Ordones, Edgar Ramírez Cruz, Anthony Ramírez Rico, Stephanie Rosales Reyes, Yatsiri Rosas Serna, Mauricio Salgado Chi, Steve Sánchez Justo, Angelica Santiago Gregorio, She Say, Juan Tadeo Alonso, Erica Utrera González, Brian Vázquez Ochoa, Christopher Vázquez Cruz, and last but not least, we have Vilma Ventura Morales. This is a great celebration. Thank you again, guys, for being here, and congratulations. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations to you all. Finally tonight, when I tell you this next student won a top national award, I am seriously understating it. I know that Airports JROTC teacher major Juan Cobb's and principal Matt Schillit will tell you more about this cadet's achievement, but let me just say this. Out of an estimated 300,000 cadets nationwide, 300,000 cadets nationwide, our Airport High School cadet was one of only 30 across the United States to receive this award. So let me hand it off to Mr. Schillit, and so you can tell us more about this exceptional student and cadet.
Thank you Dr. Hafner, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hafner. This girl right here, she is amazing and fantastic, you kind of heard some of it there, but I'm not here, they're gonna share her story. I want to take a moment to introduce you to the leader of our ROTC program. I know you've seen him all over the place over the last two years, but he has just hit the ground running and is everywhere within our community and beyond. And it's really important and I'm just really proud of how he's taken this program and, you know, made it his own and continued to make sure that it shines throughout not only South Carolina and beyond. But we're here to celebrate excellence and I'm gonna turn it over to Major Cobb's, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Major Cobb, Senior Army Instructor here at Airport. Going on my ninth year of teaching JROTC and my second year here at Airport.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Sergeant Major Retired Lan Chester. I just took over as the Army Instructor at Airport. What a journey it's been, but she has been indeed a pleasure to have as the Battalion Commander, I'll tell you that upfront. Coming into the job, just retired out of the Army doing 24 years, she grabbed me up and said, hey, this is how we do things, and she's been such a pleasure. We could stand up here for 40 minutes and talk about how she's such a great cadet, rose from the ranks of private to Battalion Commander and is leading the way in this program. I wish I had 126 Redmonds, but I don't, but we're investing in these cadets, these brand-new freshmen, and we're hoping to grow that within the program. She will see the fruits of her labor in a couple of years when she comes back and joins us, but thank you very much and I can't wait to have her come up here and talk to you guys, thank you.
So like Sergeant Major said, there's a lot we can say about Cadet Redmond, a lot. Some of the things for us, the Legion of Valor, so she received the 2024-2025 Legion of Valor Bronze Cross Award. So again, this is the highest award a cadet can receive in JROTC and college-level JROTC. She is the only one in the state of South Carolina for this year. I believe this is the first for Airport also. The Legion of Valor is something that is awarded to cadets based off their exceptional military, educational, leadership, and community service. So that goes to show you a lot about this cadet, and I don't want to steal the thunder from her, so I'm gonna let her come up here and talk, but this indeed is a great honor for her.
Good evening, everyone, thank you all for having me. So my name is Carolina Redmond Mario, and yes, I won the Legion of Valor Award and I'm very thankful for that. And I want to thank these three, they're amazing, they are phenomenal. They have built me, they have helped me since they got here, and it's been an amazing journey with them. So like Major Cobb said and Sergeant Major, I did start from the very bottom. I've done JROTC all four of my years, and I started from a private and I am the Battalion Commander, so that means that I am over the whole battalion. It's been great to show my leadership and be able to be a mentor to everybody else in the battalion. And after high school, I plan to go to college and also join the Army National Guard. When I go to college, I'm gonna be a nurse, I'm gonna go for my nursing degree, and then exceed to a CRNA. So that's my plans after high school and I thank you all for having me.
That is simply outstanding, congratulations, I know you earned it. Mr. Chair, that is.
All right, that brings us into public participation. Ms. Kiava, I think we only have one tonight still? Still just one? All right, and tonight, we have Melanie Cho, she'll be speaking on instruction. She will have five minutes. All right, Ms. Melanie, you will have five minutes and your time will begin now, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hafner, Mr. Chairman, and distinguished board members. Thank you for the time to speak this evening. First, let me congratulate you on all of the improved test scores. I know a lot of attention, effort, and energy has been expended in moving the academic needle, and we celebrate the wins along with you. But we all know, there is still a lot more work that we can do to move that needle further. So tonight, I would like to offer a real solution that I and others across our state, excuse me, have researched for several years and believe will positively affect our academic outcomes. It concerns a grading system that has been implemented in Lexington II for 25 years. My own children were in first and sixth grade when this all started, but like most parents, then and now, it has caused much frustration and confusion. The grading system is called grade inflation or grade flooring. It's, in simple terms, this policy does not allow teachers to give students lower than a 50 and provides multiple recovery retakes to inflate actual grades. That's right, no zeros are allowed. There's no doubt in the minds of many that this under-the-radar grading policy coincides with the academic decline in our district. And let's be clear, this grading policy is not mandated by the State Department of Education and therefore it could be eliminated immediately if the board so chooses. Our state already bent over backwards in 2016 to help students when the South Carolina Legislature passed a more lenient 10-point grading scale which pushed a failing grade down to 59 instead of 69. Grades are the best motivators and determinators for what students know and what they don't know, but inflating grades give a false sense of achievement. True grade, when true grade motivation is removed, our high flyers are not challenged and others who need grade motivation to work harder, don't. Students quickly learn how to game the system because they know teachers aren't allowed to give them the real grades they've earned. So, does grade inflation work? I'm giving you a folder with three articles and a study from the Fordham Institute with evidence that this practice does not. According to the 2024 Fordham Institute study, quote, "Lenient grading policies risk lowering expectations, and there is evidence that lenient grading leads to less learning," end quote. Hard work, high expectations, and merit are the bedrock of our society. Take the bedrock away and all you have left are shifting sands of complacency and mediocrity. Is this preparing students to be college, career, and military-ready in the real world? According to the South Carolina Policy Council poll taken in Sumter County School District, exposed that more than eight out of 10 teachers oppose grade flooring, which led the Sumter School Board to remove this practice, and many more across the state agreed. According to conversations I've had with parents and teachers in our district, Lexington II should also stop this practice. Even the SEA and the PSTA have grave concerns. Grade inflation only gives the perception that learning is taking place. It's the reason our test scores and graduation rates don't match up. It's the reason only three out of 10 students are reading on grade level when they graduate. Putting academic perception over academic reality leads to dishonesty, laziness, and unprepared students. And that's not operating in good faith. After 25 years, it's time to let grade flooring go. Students deserve an education that they can be proud of. Remember, transparency and honesty are always the best policies. And as I understand, we have a couple of bills coming up in the legislature this session which hopefully will remove grade flooring from South Carolina. And if that happens, then only state funds will be removed from school districts who continue to do so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Cho. All right, we're gonna move on into our administrative reports. And the first one will come from our superintendent, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hafner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. As this is our first board meeting after Veterans Day, I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of the veterans in our community. Thank you for your service, your sacrifice, and the example that you set for all of us. We had a number of special events in our schools last week and I hope that you were able to stop by and enjoy a few of those while thanking our veterans for their courage and commitment. Also, at the beginning of the month, our State Department was finally able to release our school report cards. While eight of, eight out of 12 schools had positive growth on their report card, we recognize that this is a growing journey for all of our schools and we have continued to work hard this year to maintain a trajectory of improvement, and Dr. McDonald's gonna speak to that with you in a little bit. I shared with our schools, to that point, I shared with our schools that numbers can measure performance, but they do not measure passion or community. I encourage them all to tell their story beyond the numbers. We have many great things going on in our schools. In fact, just this past Tuesday night, we held our first district school choice showcase and it was a wonderful opportunity for our schools to showcase their programs, academics, success stories, and what makes each school unique. We feel like we had a good turnout and appreciate all the hard work that everyone put into that showcase for our schools and look forward to that growing and participation growing. And I want to thank the several numerous board members that came out to see that, so thank you. And that's my brief report, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on into our finance report now, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Sky Strickland.
Good evening to everyone. The October financials were uploaded last week. Are there any questions about the October financials? Can I have your approval for the October financials?
Without objection, the monthly financial reports are set as presented. All right, we're gonna move on through. Come up on human resources, and I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hafner. I'm gonna call to the podium our Director of Human Resources, Stephanie Hux for our vacancy report.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Hafner. The vacancy report, as of November 20th, we have 10 support staff vacancies, three regular ed teacher vacancies, and one special education vacancy. Are there any questions?
Not on vacancy, but for HR, the student ambassadors, are we paying them?
I'm not paying them.
I think that's something we should consider, how we go about paying students, but they're 16, they're working age, they're doing really good work. I think that's something we should really consider between, you know, obviously budget can't be anything that crazy, but in the HR, if we have a process for hiring part-time, hourly employees, I think that's a perfect example of the type of part-time, hourly employee we'd wanna hire.
We have incentivized our cadets, our ROTC cadets for events in the past, but, you know, one of our requirements for employment is to be 18 years of age, et cetera. But we have incentivized them before, we can certainly take a look at it, but the 18-year-old.
18's a requirement for the state?
It is a requirement for us. But we'll take another look at it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else for Ms. Hux? Thank you, Ms. Hux.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our floor.
All right. Now for the one we've been waiting on, we're gonna turn it over to instruction to Dr. McDonald.
Thank you, sir, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share. First off, I want to echo Dr. Hafner's, thank you to you all who were able to make it out Tuesday night to our first school choice showcase. We had a lot of folks who worked behind the scenes to pull that off and our schools really exceeded my expectations wildly, so we're very pleased to see the many, many things that they're able to talk about. And the more we showcase that hard work, I think the more that folks will know about the great things that we do every day in our schools. I do want to ask Dr. Bergraff, our Director of Instruction Accountability Assessment, to come up. He's gonna assist in this presentation tonight. As we talk about our school report cards, of course, as you all are aware, annually, we are given a school report card as part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is our federal legislation which requires school districts across the country to be scored on various measurements. In South Carolina, of course, that work is dictated and directed by the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee who tells us all the things that we have to work through alongside the Department of Education. The goal with the school report card in South Carolina is to ensure that we're on progress to get 75% of our students at or above grade level by that 2030 bold goal that we hear a lot about from the state. And also, of course, this information was shared publicly, November 3rd was the official day. A little delay there, thanks to some review of some additional data. I wanted to begin tonight by just giving you a quick snapshot of some of our demographics over time here in the district, just so you can see where we are population-wise, demographic breakdown with our different races, also our poverty index, and you can see some shifts in that. We shared this with you last year collectively, but wanted you to see that number, what those numbers look like again this year. Of course, the majority of our work around the school report card, of course, comes back to this graphic, the profile of the South Carolina graduate. These are the skills and requisites that are required for a student. All of our assessments, our state standards, all of our materials come back to this very tool. This is what guides our decision-making, it's what we're really working aspirationally to achieve over the course of the years that our students are in our schools.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wondered if you could comment, you or Dr. Hafner could comment for us on the fact that from 2019 to this year, we have decreased by about 5,000, excuse me, 500 total students. We've lost about 5.6% of our student population. Can you comment on that at all?
I think that's a trend across the state with more options for parents, and that's part of the reason for the showcases, that we want to keep our kids and expose potential parents to what we have to offer to try to pull some of those folks back and keep the students that are in our community.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
As you all remember, we rate schools based on these five titles, these five headings, so to speak. So, schools are rated as either excellent, good, average, below average, or unsatisfactory. They receive both criteria in each of the categories on the report card, but also an overall rating that are these six scales.
For elementary and middle schools, those ratings come from five main areas. Although there's a lot of information on the report card, these five are where schools earn points. The first is academic achievement, which is a compilation of their English and math scores for students in grades three through eight. Preparing for success are their SC-ready science scores, again, in grades three through eight. One note on science, there was no reported scores for 2024 because it was a new test at the time, so as you're looking longitudinally, this past school year's report card was kind of a new reset of information based on the new standards. Multilingual learners' progress, as we saw tonight, a number of our students exited services. When students come into a school district in the United States for the first time, they are screened to gauge their English proficiency. From there, they have five years to reach that level of proficiency. And so each student has a goal set along the way to keep them on track to reach that. We're measured on the percentage of our students who attain those goals each year. Student progress looks at individual growth and it does it in multiple ways. This is probably the hardest metric to calculate because of all of the variables that go into it. Partly, each student has two goals. One advances them at the 50th percentile, but we know if you advance at the 50th percentile, you don't make gains on the rest of the crowd. So each student also has what's called an added value target, which is designed to close that gap over time. Each student earns points for meeting one or both of those goals. Each student earns points for meeting one or both of those goals, but also, because events happen in the state, that's based on historical trends, but we know when there's a pandemic, or we know when there's a state event, growth isn't always the same from year to year. So, they also compare growth to the rest of the state within that same year. So, how did your students grow compared to the rest of the students in South Carolina who are like them? The lowest 20% of students are factored in twice into that metric. And then finally, school climate. Each year, students, parents, and teachers all take school climate surveys. Those results come in. Teacher and student ratings are used for accountability, but all three do appear on the report card. High schools, you'll see a lot of the same areas are measured. Academic achievement and preparing for success come from EOC scores. Again, you see multilingual learners' progress up there. Graduation rate for high schools looks at on-time four-year graduates, and we'll talk more about that in some coming slides. College and career readiness, there are a number of indicators that students can earn to be either college or career-ready, ideally both. But high schools are rated on the percent of students who meet those criteria. Student success looks at when you come in, are you on track to graduate in four years? So, after the end of your first year, you need an English credit, a math credit, six total credits, because that puts you on track for 24 total credits at the end. We get points for all of the students who are on track toward graduation. We also get points for students who maybe they didn't graduate within four years, but in that fifth year, they earned their GED. Maybe they earned their diploma through adult ed, or they come and finish with us in the fall semester, spring semester of their fifth year. We did additional points for those students for finishing their education. And then finally, school climate is there as well.
And so, as you can see here on this slide, this shows you how those categories break down. Each level has 100 points, and those are broken down into these different headings. So, there is, I'm not really sure why they chose 19 of this in the high schools or 12 of that, but that's where our breakdown is. And so, this kind of gives you an idea of how critical it is to show advancement in each of these categories over the course of the year, year over year.
So, which students does the state look at when they're calculating these metrics? For academic achievement, it is all students in grades three through eight who are continuously enrolled from the 45th day of school on until the first day of the testing window. So, they have to be with us for a majority of the year to be factored into accountability ratings. For student progress, it's grades four through eight, because in order to measure progress, you need two years of testing. Third graders, it's the first time they take it. So, students in grades four through eight, again, who are continuously enrolled from the 45th day through and have a prior year score to measure that growth against. Recently arrived MLs, during the first 12 months after their initial arrival to the United States, MLs are included in the ML, Multilingual Learners Progress category and the School Climate Indicator, but those are the only two report card indicators that they are factored into. During their second year of enrollment, they're also included in student progress, because at that point, they have two years' worth of scores. And it's not until their third year of enrollment in U.S. schools and then following that they're included in all indicators on the school report card. This is a graphic, and I'm not going to talk through this graphic in its entirety, but I wanted you to see, this is the flow chart for how to determine what graduating cohort a ninth grader is in. This is, over 100 pages, what the accountability manual looks like that we have to abide by. So, you can see, this is just to figure out when they start high school and how we calculate that. It is not a simple process for high schools, for districts to follow, but we have definitely made strides in, as we'll talk through, wrapping our heads around this accountability manual, helping schools stay on track with all of this data. Once a student is included in a high school graduation cohort, so they have to be present on the 45th day of their first year of high school, I say present, they have to be enrolled on the 45th day of high school, their first year, they get a nine GR, a graduation cohort. So, students who are here on the 45th day of this school year are in this new graduating cohort. And over the next four years, every time a student comes into Lexington II, they are added into that cohort of students. So, over the course of four years, it swells as you get new students each year. There are only three ways that students are removed from a cohort. One, unfortunately, is if the student passes away. Another is if they immigrate to another country. And finally, if they transfer to an accredited diploma-granting program or school somewhere else. Otherwise, they are not removed from the cohort if they come to Lexington II and leave and were unable to figure out where they went. Maybe they moved to another state. We don't know that, because they didn't tell us, hey, I'm moving to Oklahoma, or wherever the case may be. And without any kind of documentation, we're the last known school that they attended. They may drop out of school to work, or they transfer to adult education. Unless they finish their diploma in adult ed within that four-year span, they count against the graduation rate of the high school. And they're not removed if they're incarcerated but don't enroll in a diploma-granting program at DJJ. So, over time, that number of students accumulates, and schools are doing a fantastic job of following up, calling, making those records requests so that we know where students go when they leave us. But the reality is sometimes, despite our best efforts, we just don't know where they When that happens, that graduating cohort affects almost every category of the high school report card. When it comes to academic achievement, if I'm a high school student, my four-year graduation cohort comes up, and I have not taken one or more of the end-of-course tests, it factors into calculations as a zero for my test score. I may never have sat for the U.S. History EOC, but in terms of accountability ratings for the high school, my time is up. I haven't taken one, so it's a zero into those calculations. The same in preparing for success. Graduation rate is all students in that graduating cohort. So, those that we walk across the stage and those that we can't locate and still are in that graduation cohort. High school student success, obviously, if I'm not enrolled, I'm not meeting my on-track performance targets. And same with college and career readiness. If I don't take the ACT or the SAT, because I'm no longer enrolled in high school, I also count against those metrics as well. So, you see the importance of knowing where students are and maintaining that cohort, because it does affect almost every area of the report card. So, let's look at graduation rate example. You see the report card graduation rates for both high schools up on the screen, but what does that mean? Where does that come from? So, we broke it out with the number of, total number of students in the cohort, and how many went to adult ed, how many earned their high school credential, meaning they were in a special ed program, they didn't earn their diploma, but they completed their high school credential while they were with us. Those do not count positively in the graduation rate. Number that were dropped out, expelled, maybe they were non-diploma-track and did not earn that high school credential. A handful who were actively enrolled, maybe they didn't finish those last couple of classes that they needed in order to walk across the stage. And then the number of graduates for each high school. So, if you look at the number of active students who were seeking diplomas in each graduation, in each high school who walked across the stage and earned them, you see it was 96% of students at Airport, 98% of students at Brooklyn Casey. Where the graduation rate comes in is all of those other students who are no longer enrolled with us for one reason or another.
The number dropped out includes the ones we can find as well?
Correct, yes, sir.
And just a clarification, because we did have a delay in data, that BC is 71.9%, just so that we're clear. That is the accurate number. So, just to kind of explain to you how we monitor this all year, it is a laborious process. Our schools are tasked with maintaining exemplary records at all times. So, this gives you an idea of some of the things that we really look at to try to help make sure that they're monitoring all their data, so not just our high schools, but all of our schools. We create files for them to review with their data, with their students, for them to track those students that count, don't count, those who were enrolled on the 45th day versus those who were here on the first day of testing. All of those metrics fit into that. We also, last year, instituted monitoring individual student growth targets, really looking at how do we set goals for our kids so that they know where they need to be by the end of the year. We also do a lot of work around helping educate folks about the importance of completing the school surveys, about what that tells our schools. Our high schools, we spend a lot of time, we meet with them quarterly to go over the list, so to speak, of kids that are in that grad rate, that we know are counting, those students who we know we're working to make sure that they get those extra two courses in, looking at how we can help them really think methodically about how to achieve higher and higher rates, and certainly keeping that data as clean as possible, tracking all of those things in real time. We also spend a great deal of time really looking at our simulator. So, we have a simulator form where our schools can spend, kind of do some estimation. Look, if we get 10 more kids to do this, here's what can happen. And so, we've really, I think, done a lot more work around making sure that our folks are as educated as possible about what these numbers, how they're derived, but also how to increase those numbers and how to really make sure that our kids are meeting those benchmarks and those targets that we've set for them. So, the first thing that we want to share with you data-wise tonight really looks at our college and career readiness, which is a major piece on our school report card, and is also one of the areas that I think we should be quite proud of as a district in terms of the progress we've made just in one short year. We saw a really strong gain across the board in this area. And so, tonight, we'll share with you some of the breakdowns of what those numbers tell us, but more importantly, what our next steps might look like in that as well.
There you see the on-time graduation rates by school compared to the state average as well. You can see it historically for the last seven years. This is the percentage of students who are college or career-ready. That means they have met one of those bulleted metrics down below. Students may meet multiple, but these are students who have earned at least one at both high schools. You see district-wide, a significant jump from 51.4% in 2024 to 58.3% in 2025.
So, those are the small things. More kids taking ACT and scoring at a higher level, more kids scoring better on SAT, more of those students who are getting those three or better on AP tests. So, that's where that increase comes from, from year over year.
Again, students who are college and career-ready, so they have met at least one of the qualifiers in both of those areas. Again, saw a gain as a district in that percentage. These are the students who are college-ready. This is an area that we continue to grow in. As colleges stopped requiring ACT, SAT, some of those college entrance exams, students are not exactly motivated to sit for a test. And so, that has started to change. Colleges have started to come back to requiring those as part of admission criteria. And so, we continue to encourage our students to do their best to take these assessments and show colleges what skills they have headed into their programs.
And one of the things that we've added for this year to help grow that college-ready sense, if you will, is that in our eighth-grade classes, all of our students who are enrolled in English I in eighth grade, we're given the opportunity to take the PSAT free of charge. And so, we're already seeing some results come back from that that are going to be very positive, which will increase our number of junior scholars that we're going to declare for this year. So, we should be really excited about seeing where that comes from.
Is this a percentage, like the 16.2 at Airport? Is that a percentage of the students are college-ready?
That's the percent, yes. That's the percent of the graduating cohorts. Those kids who were supposed to graduate on time last year, that's the percent of them who met that metric.
And I would like to just clarify on that point. That is not the percentage of students who are accepted into college. Ironically, being accepted into college is not something that makes you college-ready.
Correct.
So, we have a much higher percentage of students who do go on to two- and four-year institutions, but that is not something that they get credit for in the accountability ratings.
So, why wouldn't they?
It's a very good question, Ms. Market. I've asked that many times.
Yeah.
The same that when a student leaves and is gainfully employed from us, it doesn't count necessarily as a career-ready indicator. But obviously, an employer felt that they were career-ready. So, that is a question we continue to ask and push for. They're in the process of reevaluating the accountability model. They have to do that every so often, and I'm hopeful that college acceptance does make it in as an indicator.
Well, wouldn't, in order to be accepted in college, wouldn't they have had to take the correct courses and meet the South Carolina courses and all that?
Courses, yes. But these, this is assessments like the ACT or SAT, which are not required for college admission.
Oh, right, okay.
This last slide is the percentage of students who are career-ready. They have a qualifying career readiness exam score or an ASVAB score. They have completed CTE pathway and earned a credential, engaged in work-based learning, one of the many ways that they can earn career-ready status.
And this is one of those areas where our schools put more time in making sure that we offered that ASVAB, those other avenue kinds of assessments, so that kids could be able to qualify here more often. So, that's why you do see a good uptick in that category.
Do we mandate ASVAB or no?
We do not right now. It is not currently required.
Is that something we can mandate?
I think we'd have to look and figure out. I don't know if Stacy Baker, I don't know that that is, I don't know that we can absolutely require, but it's certainly something we could look at to determine whether that is possible or not. We can certainly make it available as we have to every student.
Say a bunch of left and right shakings of heads that it's not.
I don't know that we can.
I don't know that we can. I know that students, when they take it, have the option of whether or not that score gets released to the military, but I also think there are some who don't take it for one reason or another.
Because if you have the option to not release it, the scary part, but you can still get the credit for it.
Sure.
Seems like that's really low-hanging fruit.
We certainly have made it much more available. So, over the last couple of years, the test has been much more available to students who want to take that assessment and to give that a chance to get to that college and career, that career-ready piece, for sure.
With that said, I am a big proponent of them releasing their scores. Go military. But still.
This next slide shows you three different indicators, and if you kind of look, if you look in that green box with the white writing, there are three layers to this. So, that's what each of those numbers represents. That first number is the number of students who are enrolled in a CTE course. So, these are students who are taking everything from carpentry to business communications, all the courses that we offer here in the district. And you can see both schools, well, Airport saw an increase in the number of those courses that were, are students who are enrolled in those courses. Sometimes, kids are enrolled in multiple courses over the course of a year. That second line represents our CTE program completers. And I do want to just call to your attention that while those numbers may have gone down this year, it's important to remember that over the last several years, we've only focused on senior students. So, with a smaller senior class, you would expect those numbers to go down, because there are fewer students to be able to complete those pathways. What you're seeing, the big change in is in that bottom number, which I do want to celebrate that for a moment, because if you look down at the bottom, we went from 195 students, 195 students who earned a state or national credential to 442 in one year. These are the students who have taken an additional assessment. They've done an additional task. They've done those pieces to be on their way to being a program completer. To be that, to get that completer status, you have to complete a sequence of courses and some additional certifications. And you can see how many kids are already set up for that success. So, rather than just doing a focus on 12th graders, we've shifted that focus to 11th and 12th graders. And actually, we'll be doing some work both before and after winter break at both high schools to get some universal kinds of points. Kids have to, they have to score three points to be, to be a, to receive those credentials and so, and to be a program completer. And for us to do that, we've been working with our partner, Prisma, to offer some training for kids that actually applies, so every student can get a credential. And so, we'll continue that work, but we are very pleased, and that work has really been led by Stacy Baker, who, our CTE director, who has really looked at what are those pathways and what are those structures to be able to get that movement. So, there's lots of progress here, and there will likely be much more progress, which we saw translate directly into those college and career readiness ratings on the school report cards for both high schools. And finally, this last slide in this section looks at our students who are on track for graduate, on-time graduation. So, just wanted to point out that we're starting to see that movement back up with the number of students who are progressing annually. And part of that has really come back to how we track our data, how we keep that clean to make sure that I took English I in ninth grade, I got my credit, now I'm going to 10th grade. Rather than me failing English I, I'm able to take that opportunity, those retakes, those re-chances, I can get my credit. I'm focused more on mastery, really learning how and what I need in order to get to that next course. So, these are the students who have progressed, being able to earn those additional credits to get to that next grade level. So, let's get to the report card ratings, which this slide will give you an overview of all of our schools. So, these are our elementary and middle schools, and what of all of our schools. So these are our elementary and middle schools, and what rating they receive for each of those categories. And you can see, we're, we're very pleased with some of the work. When you look in, down this list and you see things like good and, and excellent in some of these areas, just to call your attention, some of these are improvements in the categories. But also, when you look at the student progress column, remember, that's where we're tracking kids who are growing faster than they, than what they maybe had in the past. These are students who, who are really getting to that next level of success. And you can see, very pleased with the work that, that our middle schools did in this category this year, and really made some great gains in those areas. Our high schools, you can see here, we have quite a bit of work to do in our academic areas, really focusing in on the number of students who are earning that C or better on those end-of-course tests. Also, working harder on that graduation rate to move those areas. You can see kind of across the board what those look like on the report card. And finally, this last slide will show you a historical view of where our schools were on report cards over time. I do want to just call your attention to that last column where we're looking at 25, and you can see the green. And those are schools that had an improvement. So they either had a point, a point number improvement, or they had a level improvement. And I think it's very important for us to, to single out the first one on the list, alphabetically, in the way I organized it, by level. But, but Casey Elementary went from unsatisfactory in 24 to average in 25. And while we may not think average is the best, remember, this is a bell curve. And so to fall in that middle section, it's not necessarily the end of the world. Do we want it to be excellent? Absolutely. But we moved to two levels, and I think that speaks to the leadership and, and just the hard work at Casey this past year. We also have one of our middle schools, former middle school, making that excellent rating. We're very proud of them and the progress that, that they have worked intentionally to build that excellence. So congratulations to, to former back there. And so there's lots and lots of things to celebrate here. One of my other favorites, Angela Brown, who is one of my favorite people to spar with, I call it, when we talk about increasing student achievement. Ms. Brown said to me, "We are not this. We're going to be better." And sure enough, their school went up from below average to average, and we're very proud of the progress that they made as well. So, so very proud of them. And I also want to just take a moment. We, the state moved these report card ratings back and forth a few times, and Northside Middle School was excellent. And then because of a rounding challenge by, I think it, was it two hundredths of a point?
Small.
Very, very small. They went from excellent, unfortunately, back to that average category, or to that good category. But, but we're, or to average, excuse me. They went from good to average, excuse me. Good to average. And so we're very proud of them. They, they worked very intentionally and very hard by design to get those points. And I, I, I believe the challenge has been issued now that they are not going to back down. So, so you do see that there are some very positive trends here for the majority of our schools, and we do celebrate all of their hard work. Just as, as we will share with you in January, of course, the state has notified us with the school report card. Any school that is below average or unsatisfactory is considered an underperforming school. And just so that you are aware, we'll be bringing to you their plans that will have to be approved per the state requirements, state statute. But we have four schools that have been identified for having either a below-average or unsatisfactory rating. And fortunately, we have no unsatisfactories in our district this year. These four schools on the left, Congaree, Pine Ridge, Airport, and Brooklyn Casey, will all be listed as underperforming schools for, for this '25, '26 school year. And recall, you will, you will receive quarterly updates on their progress and their comprehensive school improvement plans. But also, we need to celebrate that Casey and Wood are not underperforming schools. So we're very proud of their hard work and their movement. And just, just to give you a quick glimpse of, of some of the things that we're continuing to do this year, of course, we're working with those simulators. Dr. Burgraff does a incredible job of making sure our schools have access, easy access to data that's useful, things that are going to help them be able to project out, be able to help them really prescribe some plans, and really get in and, and understand what we're working with. We'll continue to, to monitor our data. I feel like every day we talk about data, we talk about cleanliness, we talk about timeliness, all the things that we're continuing to really work on. We've really done a lot of work this year, working on our MTSS model, really looking at how we're supporting those Tier 2 and 3 interventions with our students, being much more prescriptive in those early grades, and really leaning in on those, those models and structures really across the district. We're continuing to look at how we're procuring and how we're implementing any kind of supplemental programs. So math, for example, we have a K-8 program that we, were a part of implementation this year, and we're already seeing some good, positive progress in that area. We'll continue to track that. And then, of course, really spending time focused on those goals. We've worked with schools to make sure that we've taught with them about the right-size goal. Here's, here's what it might look like if we did this. Here's what it could look like if we did that. And making sure that we're given all the supports and processes we can to be able to help our schools really make that level of achievement that we know they're capable of, and certainly push them to do that.
You know, I really would love to see those goals, I mean, in, in just a number form, where, you know, if Wood is, well, it's cut off on our thing. I think it's 47 this year. I'd like to know if it's 52. I, I just would like to know, because really, you know, if, if you shoot at nothing, you always hit it. And so, I mean, even if, if the high school said we're going to go up by two points, I mean, I would be delighted for them to have a, a very definitive goal and for us to know what it is. Because the things that are listed on here, what are we doing this year, are the means of achieving the goals. But I would love for us to know what the goals are.
Sure. We can certainly pull some things together for you. We have that. That's, that's not impossible. We can pull that together for you, for sure.
Yeah, if we could get that in January, maybe for our workshop.
Yes, and you for sure will get those four underperforming schools. So you're going to get a goal for each of those areas of the school report card that they're going to be working on this year.
Right. Thank you.
That's my presentation. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
I completely agree on the positives. That's awesome. Way to go, Casey Wood. I think Northside, I mean, bunch of, bunch of great growth. When you broke out a couple of examples, it was college and career-ready, and it was grad rate. And I feel like since my years here, we talk about both of those a lot, rightfully so. However, we're in just the two high schools together are above 50% in both of those, and they're only total worth 38 points. But if you look, like, across this, the big one you gave us, like, it's all about trying to get the most return on investment. Everything we do is that fine line of the investment and the return. And just looking where we are, the investment that we need to make is the academic achievement.
Correct.
I mean, that's where we're at a low percentage out of 100, and that's where the most points are. So in that March, just in January workshop, nothing against college and career readiness and all that stuff, but let's go find out where we can get some dag gum points quick and in a hurry and make a really big positive impact. And so I would like as much, kind of to Ms. Burkett's point, as much attention to where we're really moving the academic achievement and the student progress. That's 70 points for elementary and middle, and that's, you know, high school's different. But that, that's where the money is, and that's where we have a low percentage. So that's, I, that's what I want to see us putting on. Where can we make our biggest bang for our buck?
And we, we would agree with you 100%. That is where we put the bulk of our effort, is how do we get those points? The rest, the rest are what I refer to as sort of your padded points. Those are the points that, that showcase all the really neat things you get to do. The bottom line is what happens in the classroom. Can you produce the results on the end-of-year exams? Can you produce the results of kids earning a C or better on the end-of-course tests?
And the next, though, my only other point slash question is, I feel from the purview here, that we have shown a lot of growth and improvement and put money and time towards ML. But if this is kind of bell-curved, we're still, that, that column is still pretty weak. And is there something that, as we come into budget season, that this board, like, where, where's our, you know, there's no one-size-fits-all, but what, I was really hoping ML scores would be, you know, 30, 40%, not average of 15 and 22%. Is there something that the board, that y'all can have ready for the board come January that we can really discuss? Say, like, you know, we've said it, or many of us have said it multiple times, if we just take tiny steps over and over and we don't innovate, we're just, if somebody, if, if the average is going up by 3% and we go up by 2%, we're still falling. So we've got to find something to make big steps, like we did in several of our schools. So I think those are the two major areas that I would like to see us discuss and have true innovation and not be scared to make big steps. That's all I have.
Ms. Rucker?
Thank you. I just wanted to note on one of the slides earlier, the state's goal is that at least 75% of students will be at or above grade level by 2030. So I think that is a fantastic goal. I wanted to ask if we could add that to the ABC report on the course progress slide and keep that as the long-term goal. And then every year we can track how we're doing with that and how we're progressing there. I think that would be very helpful. And as far as the ABC report, I know it's instruct, the course progress could fall under this area that we're in. Could you give us a, a little highlight of what, what we're seeing as far as some of the highlights right now?
Yeah, in terms of anything specific or just?
Just the two items that were kind of on the, on the report.
My computer has decided to go to sleep.
Calls out 85% of seniors are on track. Is that current as of right now?
In our, in the current month, I apologize, my-
You're going to have a paper, the paper copy here.
I'm not sure what my computer's doing here. I'm sorry, y'all.
Send them down the paper copy.
Thanks. So when you look at the, the metric, and I believe Dr. Burgraff helped pull that together, these are the, so we use our Panorama software, which you all are aware, we, we purchased that, we've been using that for a year now. This gives you a breakdown by, these are the number of students that we're tracking, and you'll see the, the number, the percent are college-ready. So those are the kid, yes, these are the percentages that reflect those criteria. So those are the ones that we've already accounted for have met that metric for the year. So based on those numbers, if we continue on our trajectory, we'll continue to declare more and more as college-ready, because we'll get test scores, we'll get opportunities to see their other pieces. Same thing with career-ready. You'll see more and more of those kids, the more that Ms. Baker and Dr. Burgraff enter those data points into our systems, you'll see more and more of those come alive. So we can certainly keep that metric for you. If that's something you'd like to see every month, we can do that.
That would be awesome. That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Burkett?
I want to tag on to what Mr. Bray said. I would, I would really like it if you guys would say to us, "You know, there's a school in San Antonio, Texas, and they started this blank program for their multi-language learners, and they went up 25 points, and it's going to cost, it cost us $500,000 to do that." I would love for you just to come and tell us that, and then we can decide if we want to spend $500,000. But it just would be nice to know what the things are that are possibilities for us. Last year, we talked about adding more multi-language learners in the classrooms, and we did a good job getting students doing that. But it looks like we've got a long way we could go with that. So I mean, I think we're open to listening to what the possibilities are.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I have one thing thanks to Ms. Rucker. I completely forgot about the ABC. But there's a chart on there that says 15 top behaviors. Unfortunately, the way it's cropped into there, you can only read seven of them, or six of them. So if we can just make sure that those labels show-
Sure.
On the Y-axis.
Any other questions for him on the report card?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Recommendation? You had a course request?
I do, yes, sir. So my second piece for you all this evening is a course request. So as you all may recall, at the last board meeting, you approved some new courses for the '26, '27 school year, as well as our course guide. One of those courses that you approved for '26, '27 is a course called Spanish for Healthcare Employees. And so after we were able to get that course through, we realized we actually have the capacity to begin offering that course in the spring of this year, and wanted to ask for your permission and, and approval to allow us to begin offering that at the Innovation Center. We also have a, a group of students who are ready to take it, should you all vote to approve it tonight. So that is a course that will cost us nothing additional to offer. Just by restructuring some, some student schedules, we'll be able to offer that section and, and begin immediately offering a very, very useful course that we're already hearing from employers, that they're excited to see where we go with this. So, so I present to you tonight the request to, to essentially offer it in the spring as a local board-approved course, the Spanish for Healthcare Employees.
I have a motion on course request.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the course request for '25, '26, Spanish for Healthcare Employees as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second?
And I have a question.
Any questions, Ms. Ute?
I do. So do you know how many students are enrolled in this for spring semester?
I believe, I'm not sure if Ms. Baker is back there. Do you have any idea how many students we have? I know we have a list of students ready for this.
We have something ready, but nobody's enrolled because we had to wait to get it approved before we actually changed their schedule. So the requirements are that they have to have had one year of Spanish, and they also have to have had either sports med one or health science one. So once that approval goes through, then we'll start moving those things around to get their schedules fixed, because it'll only be offered one lot.
And I believe, I believe our, our estimation is there'll be around 15 to 18 students.
12 to 15 is what we're hoping.
Okay. So, and I'm reading the course description. So I have to ask, who's, who's teaching this? Is it a healthcare professional?
It's not. Ms. Allen is our current Spanish teacher at the Innovation Center. So she already works with our students in that capacity. And once we started talking about this at the beginning of this school year, she's been working with our health science teachers, because the goal is that our students that are taking the health science courses would be able to communicate with people who speak Spanish when they come into doctor's offices and the like. So learning those things that you would normally say, like, "My child's throwing up," or, that they'd be able to understand that stuff, or the tools that you use in healthcare, being able to understand that in Spanish or explain it. And so that is the goal for it. And interestingly, after we started talking about this in August, Coastal Carolina and another school, I think actually in Arizona, has started this exact thing that they're going to put in place next year. So she's also reached out to Coastal, and we haven't heard back from the school in Arizona, but trying to make sure that we're aligning our curriculum to what the college is going to be doing in action. So...
Is the curriculum written?
She has written it for us. Coastal Carolina is who she's been talking, they just announced theirs like a month ago. So she's been working with them to get some access to what they're going to be offering, so we can adjust it as we need to. But she's been working with our health science teachers so that we meet the needs of what we're seeing as far as struggles when they work with students. Like, we have students that go do clinicals. So what is the language barrier that they're having when they're doing that, if they encounter people who speak Spanish? Because trying to communicate about healthcare, if you speak English and your patient speaks Spanish, that's pretty difficult if they're trying to explain their symptoms and you don't understand what they're saying. So that's what we're focusing on, and it'll evolve as time goes on, once we see what Coastal is going to operate as well.
Does she, so, Ms. Allen, is that what you said? Does she have any, other than working with someone that's in sports management or any, no healthcare, I mean, does she understa- Talking as a nurse-
Yes.
You know, you have to kind of have, know what you're talking about. And so I'm, I'm sure she's fa, you know, I, I know who you're talking about. She's fabulous. But I want to make sure she's got the background and we're giving her the tools that she needs. When you're teaching someone about healthcare, that would be like me trying to teach an IT class. It would be a little dangerous, you know, but I can, I can certainly teach a, a healthcare class, being a nurse, that's why I'm asking.
She's not teaching a healthcare class. She's teaching words and phrases that you're going to commonly hear in a healthcare setting.
But y'all are helping her to make sure she understands the terminology.
So she, so she's working, yeah, so she's working hand-in-hand with the health science teachers on what are they teaching and working on. She's sort of replicating that same thing, where it will apply to that workplace setting for, for a future nurse or healthcare professional.
So it's like the common phrasing you would hear in a doctor's office. "My child has a stomach ache." Like, if you don't know what that sounds like in Spanish, then you're going to struggle to understand what the parent is trying to tell you about the child.
I absolutely understand everything you're saying. I just want to make sure that, that none of our teachers are in a position that they're uncomfortable with, because when you're working with healthcare terms-
Correct.
It helps when you have a healthcare background.
Yes. No, she's not going to teach any health science, anything. She's just teaching, "Here's the Spanish word for this common phrasing in healthcare."
Yeah, I would really suggest that y'all, you know, interface with Lexington, with the hospital, because really what we're talking about is sort of entry-level language, I mean, not actual medical terminology. But I'm picturing like in the emergency room that somebody could say, "Okay, they're going to take you now, and now you go sit there and we'll come get you," you know, that kind of thing. But I think it'd be real interesting to find out from the hospital, what are, what are their needs in that regard.
as it evolves, and eventually, we'd like to offer a number two of this. So a second part, where we may get into more of those specialized pieces-
Exactly.
For folks who are gonna work in some of those areas. But this gives us the opportunity to sort of start that dialogue and get these partners into the school. I mean, there is a, there's a Lexington Medical Center right down the street, so we want to get them involved as we start training these kids, so that they can go out and get jobs immediately in this real high-needs area.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just making sure.
Yeah, it'd be like if I said, move, like, if you was, whatever, pier and a rota, and I don't know that means broken leg, then it would be hard for me if I'm sitting there like, I don't know what you're saying. It's more helping them understand that, more of the communication part in Spanish, not the healthcare advice part.
All right, any other questions on it? All right, I had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, all right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're gonna move on into operations, and we're gonna wake up Mr. Matt Warren over there.
Now, wake, ready to roll. Stay ready, so you don't have to get ready, right?
That's right.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Haffner, another operations update for the month of November. Want to hit a few highlights here, I know you've had this for your review, but at this point, the document says we've had one random screening, but at this point, since this was completed, we've had two at every middle and high school. So that's been good. Really appreciate our staffs and students working through this new process, and I think it's going very well, and it's provided a very clear message about, you know, kind of our focus and safety, and in a very kind of non-threatening way. So appreciate our teams and their work with that. Also, you know, work continues in maintenance with, you know, several renovation projects and things that were, you know, noted in your CPIF update document. Transportation, want to note that we've been selected to pilot a program called Wheelchair Guardian, where it's an AI camera technology that communicates to the driver and to our transportation hub, if any of the seats, the belts come unfastened or loose on the wheelchair, there's immediate notifications on that. So just something that we are excited about piloting here in our district and may grow, you know, outside of us in the state here, but excited about providing some feedback on that new program. And technology, we've rolled out two-factor authentication across the district, so another layer in our safety measures. I think we've talked about that some in here, just your thoughts on that concern. So another way to make sure we're protecting our systems and emails and data, so that's been rolled out, you know, across the district. And then, you know, down in support student support services, our nurses continue to do training, they, they train all the time, and it's non-stop. You know, we talk about medical terminology there, but just the medical field and all the new things, and new initiatives, that they're constantly learning and growing, so appreciate them and their work. And then also, lastly, our social workers were a big driving force for this, Ms. Scarborough and her team with the West Columbia Police Department stuffed a Tahoe, when I actually went out there and helped a little bit, and I think we stuffed more than a Tahoe. So it was several, several vehicles were stuffed that day, and really just a testament in our community at Walmart in West Columbia, and just their willingness to support that and provide canned foods and all kind of things for folks who need that, you know, this time of year during the holidays especially. So was very proud of our community and all their efforts to support that, that drive and our partnership with the West Columbia Police Department. And then on the heels of that, you have the CPIF update in your packet as well. Your work continues, and you see we've hit a few more things even since our last meeting, and more items are in progress, and a guy listed today from Mr. McPherson about some things that we got rolling right now. So look forward to providing you another update after, you know, Thanksgiving and our winter break with a lot more completed items. There'll be a lot of work going on over those two time periods when students and staff are not in the buildings. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Warren? All righty. Thank you. We're gonna move on into unfinished business now. We have some consideration first and final readings.
Yeah, ready, can I go?
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion for second and final reading of proposed revisions to policy GBC staff compensation, policy GCB professional staff contracts and compensation, policy GCK professional and support staff assignments and transfers, policy GCQF, discipline, suspension and dismissal of professional staff, policy GCOA, evaluation of instructional personnel, policy IC school year, ARC, excuse me, ARGCK dash R professional and support staff assignments and transfers, ARGCOA dash R evaluation and instructional staff, ARGCQF dash R discipline, suspension and dismissal of professional staff.
Second.
I had a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question. On policy IC school year, it says the board may lengthen the school day under makeup days. It says the board may lengthen the school day by no less than one hour per day for the total number of hours missed with the prior approval of the South Carolina Department of Education. Is that right? Less?
It would be, so it would be less because you, you have to get that hour of time, strangely, because it would be an hour-for-hour makeup, so you wouldn't want to give a more than, because you could essentially create a three-hour extension of the school day. So you would, so you wouldn't want it as more, you want to keep it as less. I know that makes sense. So in other words, you wouldn't add thirty minutes over ten days, you would add an hour at a time.
Got you, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Yeah, got it.
Yeah, I've just got a question on GCOA, and kudos to you, Ms. Alfred Wood, that you were able to read all of those.
Thank you.
This is evaluation of instructional staff, and I just wanted to inquire, it says that the appropriate personnel will evaluate the performance of every instructional staff member fairly and on a periodic basis, but it doesn't say anything about what, what that looks like. Are we talking about twice a year, three times a year?
I can speak to that. The basis would be determined by the contract type that they were on. You know, it mentions the acronym ADEPT here, Assistant Development and Evaluating Professional Teaching Staff. So the timeframe and the periodic basis would be based upon that.
Okay.
And it is very, very specific. It's written in a plan that we write that is approved by the State Department of Education for all referencing to all contracts. So it is pretty rigorous, and it is formative as well as summative, every year.
So the employee would know, I'm gonna be evaluated in September and March, or something?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's draw.
I don't know why I can't let this one go, but I mentioned, I mentioned it on the first reading, and I just have a problem with the transfer one. I just think you're, HR's setting yourself up when you make seniority a determining factor. It seems like that you can have it as one of the factors, I just do not like the way that's worded. It seems like you can cause an HR issue.
You're exactly right. It can cause, and, and it's all by itself, seniority or an Excel share list is not the primary. It's, it, this does read that way, but it is at the superintendent's discretion, and it is a consideration. But I do agree, and I thank you for that.
I'll let it go, I just, just feel like it was, as a hiring person in, in business, it just, when people have seniority, they're gonna play that card, and never is all things equal.
Could you read that sentence that you're specifically concerned about?
It says, I guess, I mean-
If you have something, I'll find it.
It says on the last, it says, "In the case of transfers initiated by a professional staff member, with all other considerations regarding assignment being equal, the administration will grant professional staff preferences for transfer in order of seniority within the district, subject to the approval of the principals involved in accordance with the administration."
Thank you for reading that. I agree with you. The way that I interpret that is that we give ample consideration to seniority, that, and that it is not the primary qualifier. It's also not the primary disqualifier, but thank you. And that is how we look at it. We do consider the length of time in the school, and the position, et cetera, et cetera, as well as qualifications, but the main thing is suitability. But we'll be glad to remove that.
If you're good with it, I'll, I'll leave it alone.
As long as, that is our interpretation. That is our interpretation. As long as that is met with the approval of the board, that is the way that we operate.
I'm good, I'll look forward.
Well, could I just ask what that would look like if we did remove it? And the reason I'm asking, I had not even thought about this, Mr. All, but somebody else's interpretation could be different. Somebody else could read that and say, everything else being equal, you gotta take me, because I've been here twenty-two years, and that person's only been here sixteen. You know what I mean? Somebody could interpret it that way.
They could.
And then we would have to defend that in some fashion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to amend the entire thing that Ms. Alfred Wood read, to take that one sentence out of whatever policy, that one ends up being like GC, whatever this one, GCK?
Yes. Thank you.
So my motion is that we take this one sentence out of the entire motion.
I had a motion, we have a second on that one.
I'll second.
So that language came with that Educator Assistance Act-
It did.
Came from the Department of Ed. We don't have in our current policy, I believe, seniority.
We don't.
But theirs came back along with that list of recommendations we've been going through the last couple of months, that language was, was in that, which is why it's coming out.
May I ask that green language, if it came from SCASBA, or if it came from SED?
Yeah.
Which one?
It was the legis-, the, is that going on a school board?
The legislative part of the SC, SCASBA?
Yeah.
My motion stands. We have a statute.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is correct, and our current policy and protocol does not, it reads separately, and I think it's more than fair and subjective, is not part of that equation, subjectivity. So I think our protocol for consideration and vetting is very specific, and even though that is the case, we always stand ready to defend any doc-, any decision that has been made with regard to recommendation for hire. But thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. All, thank you.
All right, we have amended motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now we need to go back to the original motion. All in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed?
Clarify that for me, if you would, please. We approved the amended one.
But we gotta go back and bring all of them, all of them.
Bring all of them in.
Okay, but it's still gonna have that sentence out.
Correct.
Okay, aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we got another one there before you, Ms. Wood.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we make a motion that we approve second and final reading of policy JFAB, admission of non-resident student.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that one? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All right, motion carries. All right, let's move on into new business now, and we got some more policy.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve first reading of proposed changes to board policy GCQC, GCQD, resignation of instructional staff and administrative staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we have any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All right, motion carries. All right, now we got a consideration for community requests for naming it a Brooklyn KC High School softball field.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if we could, please, I would like to call Ms. Elaine Lundey and her sweet mother to the podium to share some insights with us.
So if y'all think that I'm outspoken, we don't give her the microphone very much, because this is where I learned it from. She's gonna stand here with me, because this is Mrs. Coach Lundey, and she stayed in the shadows of my dad for years. So I wanted to take this opportunity, since she was here tonight, just to be able to introduce her and let you guys know that this is what kept our family going. We probably ate more family meals at either a BC softball field or in BC's gym than we did ever at a table. So I just wanted y'all to be able to put a face to Mrs. Coach Lundey here. And I really wish that you guys would have been able to see the number of players that always show up for Coach Lundey, but when I looked at the agenda, I said, guys, playing on an hour to two. So if you need to watch by link, please do that, and don't feel like you have to be out here, but we do have some players in the audience, the ones that have stuck here, if y'all want to stand up.
Thank you.
Oh. We have stuck through this long board meeting and be glad that it's me up here and not Dad. If anybody's ever heard him talk, we'd be here for another two hours. So when we, when we talk about Dad, we always jump to softball or carpentry, and I'm not sure really what's gonna happen when I start talking about this, because he didn't like for this kind of information to be shared about him. But I think it's important for you guys to understand what started the passion that brought us to Casey, South Carolina, and started burning a passion in, in the Lundys, and y'all have three Lundys in here, so be prepared. So Dad started out in a, in Union Point, Georgia, in a family that had a lot of needs. And they farmed everything they had, they grew it, things I don't like to talk about, you know, because my pork tops come from a tree, so they do other things. But truly farmed and canned, and everything they had, it was hard work. And Dad started working when he was twelve, running a, a paper route. He walked it until he made enough money to buy a bicycle. He bought a bicycle, he continued his paper route, and that money went to his family. His dad got sick, Dad worked. He could not go into the military, which he was very, very upset about, because all of his brothers were in the military, and one, a Vietnam Vet, and it always weighed heavy on him, because medically, they would not allow him to go in. So what he did is he stayed home, and he took care of the family, and he provided money while his dad was sick. And he went to a high school, and I'm gonna call this principal by name, because this is, I know this is what started the fire. Mr. Akery told my dad, when he was a senior in high school, that he was not college material, and he needed to get his job at the mill and work in the sock factory, that's what the mill was. And my dad said, watch this. And he pulled his family, and he started doing construction, wound up being foreman of many of the high rises in Columbia. And my sister, right here, Michelle, and my other sister, Trina, they had the unfortunate piece of just moving around the state of South Carolina. By the time I came along, nine years later, we were very settled in Casey, South Carolina. But Dinnard Harris said to my mom, because she, she worked in our district too, they were like, hey, we're gonna have to move once again, and he was like, no, 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 you tell Richard Lundey to give me a call. And we're not sure, he was either the first or the second carpentry teacher at BC High School. And all of us went to Lexington too, and there's only one thing that we're more passionate about as a family than Lexington too. too, and that's my dad. Because we shared my dad with hundreds and hundreds of kids. And we never batted an eye about it. They were our family. We could line his ballplayers up right now in this room. We could tell you every single name. And we could tell you something about them. Because we talked about them nonstop in our house. What do they need? What are they good at? What their dad called and said to my dad? Because they didn't like the playing time. It was Lexington, too, BC High School, and especially softball was our life. And dad gave everything he had to Lexington, too. Just to give you a little background, when they started playing in 1989, or when dad started coaching in 1989, they played at Wilkerson Field. That is over by Spire's Gym. If you can imagine having to play on rock solid, you played there. I mean, it was just like, it was so hard. The ground was so hard, the field was not kept up. But that's where they practiced, that's where they played. He was able to move that over to BC High School. And for the first time ever, they had their own locker room. They didn't have to change and travel somewhere. So they were able to have a locker room there and a coach's office. And then they moved to their current location on Seventh Avenue. Dad was there for 23 years. He served as head coach. His career record was 549 to 164. He really built a culture of teamwork, discipline, and perseverance. School came first, always. If the grades weren't there, the playing time wasn't there. He had 15 region championships, eight lower state championships, four state runner-up titles, four state championships. And he also founded a JV program. When he first started, they didn't have a JV program. And everything my dad did was to ensure that it would continue. And so he wanted that JV program so that whatever he was teaching to the varsity program, he was teaching to the JV program so that, because one day I'm not gonna be there, is what he would say. And he wanted to ensure that the program stayed solid. So for 17 of his 23 years, there was a JV program there to ensure the program's future. Perhaps the most meaningful measures of Coach Lundey's legacy lies in the lives he touched. He had 20 all-state players, 20 all-star players, one professional softball player, 26 college athletes, many of who are still coaching now. When he, unfortunately, when he left BC High School, he, we had a plan. It didn't work like we wanted it to, that's all right. So we went over to White Knoll in Lexington, one, and made a successful season there. And he actually got to be the assistant coach for one of his players that he had coached. So that was also, it was fun for him. He likes to give her a hard time. So he, throughout his career, he was recognized for his excellence and integrity. He was Region Coach of the Year 11 times. In 2000, he received the rare distinction of being named National Federation of High School South Carolina Coach of the Year, National Fast Pitch Coaches Association South Carolina Coach of the Year, South Carolina Athletic Coaches Association State Softball Coach of the Year. He was inducted to BC High School's Athletic Hall of Fame in 2020. And also as a vocational teacher in the Educator Hall of Fame in 2022. He has, he lived grit, pride, and heart. His players would always hear Battle Baby Battle, Show and Go. And there's a long story behind, I don't even wanna hear you breathe. So dad couldn't say THs. He said THs as Vs. And so he was not okay with the performance that they had given one night. When they got on the bus, it was, I don't even wanna hear you breathe. So he carried both accountability and love. Good? Okay. So this, for you guys to consider this and even have it on the agenda is an honor to us. It's a thank you for all the hours that he spent because little known fact, he really didn't know how to coach softball when they asked him to coach, but he studied. And he, he asked questions and he watched videos and he figured it out. So this would definitely be a permanent tribute to a man whose influence shaped not only a program, but generations of young women who learned to compete with integrity, courage, and heart. And he is definitely a legacy in this area. And his players love him very much. And I'm just honored to be able to stand up here and talk to you about my dad. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we change the name for the PC High School softball field to the Richard Lundey softball field.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion on that?
I will make a few, I didn't play fast pitch softball, if anybody was wondering. However, when I switched over to BC High School in 10th grade, as a brand new kid to the school, my first class I had was Coach Lundey in carpentry. And I had no desire to do anything with carpentry or anything of that kind of field. I was gonna go do other stuff. But as a kid coming over and a kid of a pretty magnanimous coach myself, it was very comforting to sit in his class and learn a brand new trade. And one that I still, I still have a miter saw at my house. And it actually has a little, nobody really cares, but when you're cutting crown, there's some couple measurements you need to know and they're scribed there. And I think of Coach Lundey on the, you know, once or twice a year that I'd do that. But I'm also very lucky to ride down Seventh Avenue or Seventh Street quite often. And I think of Coach Lundey all the time. And I can just empathize with you of sharing your father with not just three, two sisters, but with thousands of sisters. And that can be awesome, but that can also be really tough for both you and your mom. So yes, we are congratulating your dad and your husband here, but it's also a lot that all of you put into it. So thanks for what y'all have done.
And I messed up really quickly. We also have his son-in-law, sorry, I was really nervous, and his daughter-in-law, Kelly Remia, most of you, I don't know if you, we'll talk sometime if you wanna know that dynamic. And then Reagan and Peyton are here also, and that's two of his grandkids. The others are watching by link.
Thank you.
All right. Any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. All right, now we got some school travel.
We do. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the four student request, out-of-state or overnight student travel request. One is Airport High School Honor Choir, students to travel to SCACDA Honor Choir Weekend at Coastal Carolina, January 23rd through the 24th, 2026. The second is Airport High School Drama Club, to travel to South Carolina Thespen Festival on February 20th through the 22nd of 2026. Airport High School Honor Choir, third is Airport High School Honor Choir, to travel to the Southern Regional ACDA Honor Choir in Memphis, Tennessee, March 4th through the 8th, 2026. Fourth is Airport High School Students to Travel to France, Spain, at Paris in Parinies, May 30th through June 8th, 2026.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I want to go to Paris.
That sound like a good trip there.
That's a pretty good one. Where's Mr. Shilla? Can we catch, can we catch a ride on that?
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, don't some of the board members need to go home?
I need to. All right. That brings us up to our announcements now, so y'all getting close to going home. November 24th through 28th is Thanksgiving break. December 3rd is early release day. December 19th, end of second nine weeks. December 19th is half-day for students. December 22nd through, to January 4th is winter break. January 5th, 26th, Teacher in Service Day. January 6th is classes resumed, students return. Oh, they excited. January 7th is report cards issued, homie. Come back and get report cards. January 15th is our regularly monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees here at District Education Center. And then also on the 24th is our board workshop. Y'all want a lot of fun, come to that all day with us. And then January 27th, Lexington Two Teacher Fair in the PAC Center, and that'd be 4 to 6. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Woodin to get us out of here.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees enter closed session for the following: consideration of personnel appointments, retirements, and resignations, and legal advice regarding board policy AB.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We are now in executive. Thank y'all.
Make a motion that the meeting be reconvened in open session and the appropriate affidavit executed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, on favor of the AI.
Uh-huh.
We are back in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendations for resignations, retirements, resignations, terminations, and others.
Have a motion and a second, on favor of the AI.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation to report to the South Carolina Department of Education, report of a breach to employee three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, on favor of the AI.
Uh-huh.
All right. Um, as hard as it is to make motions that tug at your heartstrings, there's one that we have to make a motion tonight that the board will accept Dr. Brenda Hefner's retirement. that the board will accept Dr. Brenda Hefner's retirement from Lexington School District Two, and it will come into effect at the end of the '25-'26 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Hefner, we love you to death. We're gonna miss you, but we know it's right. You're doing what's right for your family. We just ask for prayers for your family, for you, in all circumstances. But we thank you for your time here with us and service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bless you, and we love you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One more thing.
No, my thing.
One more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got so emotional, Dr. Hefner.
I'm sorry.
But to help out with Dr. Hefner to finish out this year, we have asked Dr. Angela Cooper to step in as the superintendent designated, which she will be here for us anytime that Dr. Hefner is out the remainder of the school year. And we thank you for that, Dr. Cooper. All right?
All right.
Anybody want to make a motion to get us out of here?
To what?
Get us out of here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.